I know we have a lot of folks here tonight, so it's gonna be a possibly extensively long night. So the way we kind of do our meetings is I'll ask for public comment for an agenda item at that agenda item. We'll ask people to come up, please state your name and your address for the record. Want to give a comment to the council typically council members won't speak back, they'll just receive a comment. Once everybody has had an opportunity to give their comments, then we'll shut down public comment and that's the time for the council to speak. So during that time, if you guys could be quiet so everybody can hear what the council's saying, that would be much appreciated. Outside of that, we're gonna have some hearings to start off the meeting with, so it'll be unless you want to come up and speak during those times, but we have to gabble in and gabble out for each one of those hearings, and then we'll get started on the regular agenda for good time. Are there any questions? Alright, so first we have a hearing for revenue neutral. Lynn or Ben, explain to council since this is the first time we've ever went through this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The revenue neutral hearing is a hearing to allow the public to comment on the mill levy. The mill levy this year is intended to be held constant from last year with the exception of a minor decrease for the, that's already been discussed for the library. Right, put to 4.2 mills. That's the only increase that we've got from last year. The state legislature calculates the levy as revenue neutral when revenue for property tax stays the same, so the levy would be lower. In this case, the city's always captured the increase, the assessed value for the growth in expenses without having to increase mill levy. So what this hearing does is open up comment for, for the revenue neutral, for the revenue neutral mill levy.
Anybody here like to speak to this? Alright, seeing none, we'll close that revenue neutral hearing portion and open up the annual city budget hearing portion.
So the annual city budget this year is 17.783 million with around $2 million in ad valorem taxes and a levy of 45.013 mills. And that's actually a decrease, somewhere of a decrease from our estimate for 22. This public hearing allows the public to comment on the budget itself.
Anybody here from the public like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close that hearing and open up hearing for amended annual city budget.
So the last hearing is for the amended 22 budget, we've got some cleanup items, the biggest of which is a transfer out of reserve into the electric fund for the purchase of the generator, and that allows us to use that money. There's other minor decreases just as expenses come in, a little higher than what we had intended. Some of it was bond, bond and interest, where the, where the bond and interest was captured from last year that should have been this year.
Anybody here like to speak to that agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing for amended annual city budget. Thank you, Ben. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda?
May I approve the agenda?
I'm sorry.
Can move the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next agenda, consent agenda? Can I answer for that?
Question to hand, on the Sullivan Square rental request form. See at least a couple of those on the 4th Street closures, is that part of the form or is that separate?
I'll have the program plan on that question.
As far as street closures?
Yeah. Is there a separate request, special request that they have to do with a street closure or is that all encompassing?
It's all encompassing.
Is there a checkbox on the form, Ben?
On the one, I did not get the information until later this evening. On the homecoming pep rally, it would be in front of Sullivan Square on the 7th to 8th.
Hold on, move, we approve the consent agenda. Can move the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Alright, so we'll move into old business. First item under old business, the rid resolution for Fire Tree. Lynn, if you want to give us...
May sound familiar to you because we've passed a previous resolution establishing a rural housing incentive district is a lot more difficult than I originally thought it was. There's ordinances that we had to pass originally, a resolution that established the ability to do that. But the state law actually says you have to do this resolution and then opens a 30-day period for protests where the other taxing bodies then have 30 days to come in and say whether they're gonna object or not. Now, we've talked to all three of them, they've all said they've supported the establishment of rural housing, but you have to do this for each specific one. So once we do this for Fire Tree, and then if we're gonna do a further one, say for Heritage subdivision or anything else, you gotta go through the same process. So this is really establishes that 30-day window, so this'll, this'll come back again if there's no objection in October for the 30 days, and then we'll pass, I think, an ordinance which then establishes the rural housing incentive district and then go forward with construction and all that. So this is kinda getting to the tail end of the process, but we're not there yet. Like I said, there's numerous ordinances and resolutions to pass on this. Didn't know that when I originally started this, the first time we've been involved with the rural housing incentive district because they opened it up to us a couple of years ago, and so counties and cities of our size can take advantage of this. So we're plowing ahead, and there's a lot more paperwork involved, a lot more steps than I thought, but that's all this is, is establishing a resolution that allows you to establish a specific rural housing incentive district now. I said just be more general.
The three entities, school district, county, and Douglas County?
No. Yeah, school, school district, county. Yeah, and us, yeah. Correct, the only, the only two that could object. Yeah, it's just, yeah, there's only three involved, yeah.
So, and just those entities formally object?
Yeah, and if they could, then they can veto the establishment of it. They have the power to do that. So in the state of Kansas, you cannot force it on any other taxing body. They have to consent to it. Different in other states, but in Kansas, a very strict law now, so. No, we've actually gone and talked to them, you know, more than once on these, on neighborhood revitalization, which is a different program than the rural housing incentive district. We've talked to both of them on that, and they both are very supportive of doing this. For the school district, they see this as a way to get more houses here and then, of course, get, get more children in the school. And the county sees the same way. We need more housing in Douglas County for a lot of reasons. And we have, of course, a huge economic development project going on just east of us. People are gonna want a place to live, so I think we, we can't provide housing for everybody, but it is a good start, really is. So that's the purpose behind all this. So it's good timing, actually. So, but yes, nobody, nobody's objected so far. We started this process, it seems like about two years ago. It was during the pandemic, and we originally wanted to talk with the school about it, and then later the county. So everybody's been supportive of it. So, anything else?
Thanks, Ben.
Alright.
Anybody from the public like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, council comments? I'll entertain a motion. I move we accept the Fire Tree Rural Housing District Resolution as presented. Can move the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is under old business, Orange Street Development. Lynn, is there any staff that has any further comments on this?
I believe so.
We'll open it up to public comment. Anybody like to speak to this?
Hello, this is for the Orange Street Development?
Correct.
Perfect. I did email the council members, I just wanted to also pass around the hard copy of a petition I went around and collected of residents in the area who just were not in favor of having that rezoned to light industrial. If I could, I don't know who, George, I didn't have your email, so. Okay, there's a copy with my pass and a... You don't want an email? That's fair. Yeah, so I just wanted to give the council a chance to read that and think it through. Also, to reiterate that there are residents who are not in favor of rezoning it to light industrial. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Is that for, uh? Go ahead, yep. State your name and address for that.
Wendy Dawkins, 1417 10th Street. I kinda have questions because last time the council talked about the county paving Orange Street and East 16, or 1600 Road. Did anybody find out if they will pave it and when? Because you don't wanna do the cart before the horse and have all that traffic coming through residential area if they're not going to? And also, if they do pave it, you know that traffic is gonna go through a school zone, right? Grade school on 1600 Road and over railroad tracks. I don't know if that would make a difference to people that have boats and RVs, but... I just, I just would like to know if the county is actually going to pave those roads. When the city buildings were put in, they said no. That was my understanding, that they wouldn't do that.
We are not supposed to do that.
Okay. So will that be done prior to this being developed, or?
It's county road, so we can just put in a request and see what they...
So all that traffic will be going on 10th and 8th and 9th?
That I don't know. I don't know where the traffic comes from. Ed, when he was here putting the county request, look back, it's just a long road. Look how long it took to get the crossing at Heritage.
It's what?
I mean, look how long it took to get to the crossing at Heritage. Any changes in streets or paving or crossings and stuff like that, just takes...
Well, see, I think that should be a concern because that means the, all that traffic will come through. And the other day out in my front yard, an 18-wheeler came down Orange Street and tried to turn onto 10th. He didn't make it. He about wiped out the pole. So I hope all of you take that into consideration before the development.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
George, you got your hand up?
George McCrery, 302 Second Street. And I've distributed a letter, I believe, and the council should have received it. If not, I have extra copies of it. But I just wanna review some of this information. The original project for Osage Orange was, was formed in a partnership on the 19 acres out south of town. It was intended, it was purchased by two long-term residents and business owners. The property was purchased to invest in the community, community as a long-term investment and to allow them to possibly grow their businesses and some other businesses. We're requesting rezoning of six acres across the street from the Baldwin City maintenance facility, the power plant. We understand the long-range plan for the, the property from 2008 was residential. That's why we're asking for the six acres to be rezoned. The remaining 13 acres would stay in R1. 19 acres, you gotta have stages of plans for development like that. Our first phase is to try to develop the south side. The other portion, we don't have a plan. It would stay in residential, it would stay in the wildlife. I mean, we've spent time and energy cleaning up the property, taking out truckloads of trash, and looking at the options for the land. Some of the community needs, we designed a plan that might meet several needs for our community along with allowing two of our current businesses to grow. There's a need for storage facilities in the three current facilities in town, they're 90% full. To have a designated area for campers and boat storage in town, there's places all through town that have campers and boats in their yard and, and taking off, taking up driveway spaces. And lastly, the need for commercial space in Baldwin City, it's, we need commercial space. And I'm, and I'm, I'm gonna pause right there because I just was looking at some census information from 2002. Our average age in this community is 31.8. Average house, there are 1,469 households. 95% of them are occupied. The median income, or the median of income is 74,000. When you step it out and look at the 6006 versus just Baldwin City, we have a population base of 7,900. The median age is 36.7, average income 77,000. 97% occupied, 70% owner occupied. We have a thriving community. We're trying to do something to help grow the community and help some businesses grow. We know there's a need for businesses because we have a list of people that have come to us. At the last council meeting, we had the opportunity to speak and explain ourselves. We're advised to apply for light industrial permit versus commercial. We thought it'd be commercial right off the bat. We're advised by city staff that we needed to apply for industrial. We followed that direction. We went to planning and zoning. There were some concerns at planning and zoning with the industrial. It had to be categorized as industrial for the, for the storage, and we're one of the only communities in the area that categorizes land for storage as industrial, not commercial. We'd like to build a 14,000-square-foot commercial building for trade businesses, similar to the one in West Baldwin where you got a garage door and an office door. We're not putting in storefronts, we're not trying to create commercial traffic. The concerns at planning and zoning with the development would cause additional strain on traffic flow in the neighborhood. Residential compared to commercial, our facility's gonna be shut down at 6:00 PM on average every evening. If it's a commercial business, we're not gonna have any evening traffic, we're not gonna have evening cars. Average house in Baldwin is 2.79 for, for the city of Baldwin. There's multiple cars per household. The primary traffic after, would end at, at 6:00 PM. We don't feel like we're gonna have a greater impact on the traffic flow. You just heard, there's already concerns from traffic in the neighborhood. We don't feel like we're gonna put a heavy load on that. If somebody comes, the average visit to storage is once every one to two months, once you fill up a, a, a unit. So having a trade, trade business, a commercial trade business, we don't feel like is gonna put a heavier strain on that area. And other concerns is the industrial building because there's more room to do different things in industrial versus commercial. We went on the advisement of the city staff because we were doing storage as well. If that's something we need to address and come back in commercial and ask for a special permit, please, we're asking for a recommendation. We're looking to develop some land in Baldwin, and there's a need, and we're willing. We're asking for this council to overturn the planning and zoning's negative recommendation on this. We'd like to start moving dirt for the fall to have something complete by the end of next year because with materials and costs with materials and just in any project, everything's pushed out an extra six months at this point in time. The objective of the project is to first build the 14,000-square-foot building, which would run north-south, right straight across from the maintenance facility. The concern of the planning and zoning, that the view from the storage would be obscured to the neighborhood. The storage is intended to be on the west end. The building on the east side is gonna block the view. We've got plans, we've got drawings for berms and putting in natural barriers. We'd like to see the land as preserved as possible, but we think we got something here, and we would like your consideration in that. And that's all I have. Please and thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item?
Addy, Chris Thomas, 1203 10th Street. My property is not adjacent to this development in the neighborhood, but not adjacent. But I assume the people that did buy houses there didn't expect they were moving into an industrial area. So if that part of town's gonna become the industrial part of town, it seems like we would want some type of buffer to the existing residential, to protect those people's property values and just their quality of life. You know, in addition to traffic, which I'll talk about, you know, we've got lighting pollution, noise pollution, and then the fact that it's gonna be industrial zoning, even if it's not an industrial, even though it's currently not planned to be an industrial development, zoning in it as an industrial would allow an industrial development, from my understanding. And if that's not what we're wanting in that area, it seems like we need to fix the zoning issues that are preventing us from zoning it to meet, you know, whatever we, the council wants to have there. As far as traffic, you know, I work from home, I look at 10th Street all day out the window. There's a lot, you know, just a significant increase in traffic since the city facility was built down there, and that's to be expected. 10th Street's not a wide street. Sightlines are bad, it's hilly. It's, you know, two trucks essentially can't pass. You know, backhoe going 45 miles an hour and a truck can't pass. I, I think we've got already a issue there with traffic. This may not make it significantly worse. When we say industrial, I do think of trucks, additional trucks going down 10th Street. But we know we already have a problem. Seems like if we're going to plan, let's address the existing problems before we create additional problems. So that's all I got.
Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item?
Alright, I'm Jill Boyle, I live at 920 Indiana. I've lived there for over 20 years. And I'll just reiterate that the traffic has greatly increased in the last two years. 10th Street was never intended for this type of traffic. And it's also, parallel parking is allowed on both sides. So most of the times a day, if you drive or walk down that street, you're gonna see vehicles pulled over. So it's, when you're talking about two vehicles passing and you're also going over a hill and passing a truck or a truck with a trailer with mowers on the back, it's, the sightlines are not good. And George, are you saying that there is no RV and boat? That, that part is no longer part of the plan? Because I don't understand how you can close at 6 o'clock and tell people they can't go get their RV or boat on a Friday night or Sunday. They have to have it there by 6:00 PM. That doesn't sound like it makes sense to me. Like you would have to be open later than 6 o'clock if people are getting boats and RVs. So in addition to the weekday traffic, you're talking about a higher traffic with larger vehicles, RVs, trailers with boats, really ramping up on Friday, all day Saturday, and then still on Sunday. So it not only affects the weekday, but if the RV and boat storage, which is what I heard at the zoning and planning commission meeting, you're talking about traffic seven days a week, even on the weekends, so.
Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item? Alright, seeing none, we'll close public comment on this agenda item. Council comment?
Since traffic is, sounds like it's a major concern, has there been an actual traffic study done?
I don't believe at this point there has, but I have to defer city staff. Never would know, not from... So traffic has been a theme. The other theme has been the industrial versus commercial, and people not preferring that industrial as opposed to the commercial. Last council meeting, we briefly discussed a possible restriction, which where you could maybe have an industrial, but maybe only allowing the industrial park being storage units. Russ, we kinda, I think, bounced about few areas here somewhere, and we weren't maybe sure about that as being a possibility.
I think Dakota indicated we could do restrictions on.
Okay, Dakota, yeah, correct.
Wait, what did you say?
Dakota told us last meeting that we could put restrictions on.
On industrial?
Yeah.
Now, if we go in industrial as opposed to commercial, is that tied up council for future, future, if they sold out, say in five years, is that tied to council, or we can't go back and change it from what we decided at first to, for the second time?
Yeah, they'd have to make application to change the zone. Once it's zoned, it's zoned.
Once it's sold, it's ever...
Once it's zoned, it's zoned. So you don't, council doesn't have the authority to go back and change somebody's zone. Every zone or property, unless they make applications to have them changed.
So if they sold it, and Scott and I wanted to put it in airport, we gotta come back to the council?
I would say there's probably not enough room, six acres for airport.
You don't, you don't know what I'm talking about. We wanna put in a horse ranch.
No, you're right. I mean, the zoning is council's only control point on any development, right? So, once you've changed it, it's that until council, somebody makes a request to change it to something else. I don't think the council can arbitrarily go in and change zoning.
They can't go in and change it arbitrarily?
No. Well, think about that. If you make an investment based on a zone, and you buy property before you get a rezone, you put, you improve it, and then the council changes that on you, obviously that's putting a bad spot on it. So you can't arbitrarily change it back. So that's why you have to be very careful on these zoning issues, that you make sure you don't have unintended consequences, which is what I think everybody's concerned about here. Is if the zoning for IP1 says there's seven things you can do in here, and you know, that's where currently the, the storage falls, but you also have to be, you also have to live with the other six if some future business wanted to do that. And so, I mean, I looked at the commercial, you know, zones, and there really isn't any, you know, any of them that makes sense. Because if you look at, you know, like CP0, I mean, there's a whole, you know, whole host of things that if you go in there that I don't know that I would prefer going there if you made that. So it's almost like it's light industrial, you know, IP1, because that's really where it fits and there's less other things you could do. So if there's an ability, if, if the concern is, this is acceptable, but we don't want anything else other than this, you know, maybe that's where we have to go and get, you know, make a special use case for this or a restriction to just this. And then if somebody wanted to come in later and do the rest of the IP1 or something else, then that next council gets to make that decision. So we maintain the control of this is acceptable, really nothing else at this time. Does that make sense?
Yes. That's as good an explanation as I've had. You did a fine job. You're the only one in the world.
You're the only one. You owe me one.
Dakota, can you talk to us a little bit about what kind of controls you can put in place?
So, give me, there's obviously, you can do, if you're granting variants, what are the variants would be for specific use, which we're talking about. I think, Scott, you're talking about specific uses, like.
Yeah, it's, I don't know if we take a variance to one of the commercial zones because then there's a whole host of other unintended consequences that that opens up. If you look at the list, there's a lot of things that go in, in all the commercial.
Well, let's go, so let's start there then, in terms of the underlying zoning, right? So you're talking about if you were to rezone this plot as a commercial plot, correct? And then what that opens you up to, even if there's a variance in there? Because what you've rezoned, when the conference we were having, is you've set in stone for that property, what the zone is, until someone who owns the property has interest in it comes back and asks you to change that underlying zoning. And I think the concern I'm hearing is that you don't want to open the door to allow for commercial, all the things that fall under the commercial for future owners who don't want to come back in. They don't need to ask for any changes, they don't need to ask for it to be rezoned. So then question becomes in light industrial, what could you? Because there's far less uses in light industrial and there are commercial. What restrictions could you put in place to that specific use? And so, I don't, I don't want to sit here and say, I can tell you exactly how to go about doing that because it's not exactly straightforward. It'll be, you'd have to be working with the landowner on that and put in place those restrictions. And anyone who came and bought the property later could, of course, come and say, well, those restrictions don't apply to me and I don't, and I want to challenge the restrictions. So I don't want to sit here and tell you, you can put yourself in a nice, neat little box that no one else will ever be able to come in later and do, to undo it. What I think, I'd, I'd say right now is, you've got some other issues that have been brought tonight too that aren't going to be addressed through zoning, road specifically, that the zoning there though, I think, might impact how you make those applications and if those things get done. So there's things that are inside an agreement you can make. There's things that are outside that agreement that are going to be governed more by the county and the partners that we're working with on this. That being said, go to the, oh, use regulations for, I mean, this would be IP one, the planned light industrial. And so, you get to section fifteen.
I can read them, there's seven.
Yeah, go ahead.
Manufacturing, processing, fabrication, assembly of any commodity except junk or salvage, except the use is enumerated as permitted in District IP two or requiring a conditional use permit, which we wouldn't provide.
You wouldn't provide a conditional use permit?
And that's? That's one. Two is warehousing, wholesaling and storage of any commodity except junk or salvage, except the use is enumerated as permitted in District IP dash two or requiring conditional use permit, which we wouldn't provide. Three, dwellings for resident, night watchmen and caretakers employed on the premises. Four is laboratories, research, experimental or testing. Five is offices and office buildings, which online's a problem for me. And then six is restaurants and automatic food and beverage vending machines. Seven's, and all of them railroad rideables. So those are seven things in IP one that, if you zone to that, that's what this could be used for from here on.
It can be used as long as zoned as light industrial.
As long as what?
As zoned as light commercial. So as long as it remains that zone that way, those are the seven uses, correct? And that was what it draws, I think. Last time we were here for the commission, looking at the council, there were a number of folks who brought up specifically, and I want to make sure, clear about this, that use number four, which was laboratories, research, experimental or testing. The other thing I'd say is, you start talking about number one and number two, manufacturing, processing, fabrication, assembly of any commodity except junk, that's a pretty broad definition as well. The warehousing, wholesaling, storage of any commodity, that's something, it's broad in the sense that you can store anything there with the exception of some uses of IP two, some industrial, the more heavy storage. But those are also all things that can be, be put on that IP one area. So you're open, when you, when you rezone, what you're doing is you're granting the person who owns that property a limited set of uses. And those limited set of uses aren't as narrow as what normally thinks. There's seven here, but really those seven cover many different manner of things. Changing those, like the, like the issue we talked about a second ago, you're not going to be able to, because it's going to be owner specific. Unless you have a provision in there, you can't make an agreement with someone perpetuity when they sell their land because then you're going to be infringing on their abilities, their alienation rights, going to sell that property unless it's something that's in here already in the zoning, specific to the zone. So that's where we run into an issue about making specific agreements with a potential landowner, then asking that to be then carried over into any subsequent sale of that land and that we have that same agreement with anyone who would come in and purchase that land down the road. And Scott, help me out in this. From a commercial perspective, you're not, you're not thinking about rezoning in that direction because of the number of uses there that are probably just as owners, if not more so, than the ones that are in the light industry.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think that's for discussion. When I was looking for a better zone, they all, all the commercial ones brought up different, much bigger pool of potential uses that would generate more traffic and all the things that people are concerned about. So I think the question is, is what I hear you saying is we can't do a zone and exclude six out of the seven use cases?
You can create as many zones as you'd like.
There you go.
That's a different matter, right? That's a zoning planning matter and you can slice as narrowly as you'd like to.
Right.
At some point though, that becomes kind of productive and, and it also makes it very difficult. Or if I was, if I was asking for my, my land to be changed to a certain type of use and I'm in a, let's just for example, say, light industrial seven, brand integrity. The only thing available there is what I'm doing on that land, that's going to be difficult for me to sell that land down the road. So that's where you want to have some more options available to potential buyers of your property down the road. And why I think almost all zoning has a broader, broader zoning and, and uses than you would have in just a single, this is going to be for solely laboratories, research, experimental and/or testing. I'd say you can't do that, but it does impact the, the ability to sell it later. Now, obviously, after sale, the revised property can come back just like any other landowner could and say, hey, we don't want to be zoned this way. We want to go back to being whatever, we want to change to this, that, and that's a risk they take as a purchaser. But that's certainly, it's not that it's closed off in the future. It's just, it'd just mean they'd have to come back before the council and make that request.
That's what I was going. Are you saying that with your zone, on top of your zone?
I'm saying that you can, you can create your zone regulations so long as it's within legal boundaries and what's allowable on their state law and federal law in a narrower ways so that you can exclude more things from certain types of zoning. There's nothing saying that you have to have a specific number, specific type of light commercial or light industrial or heavy industrial. Certain things have to fall in those zones. And you can have multiple types of light industrial. So you could, but that's something that's not property specific. That is zoning regulation that would then be available to any, anyone coming to the council that has to be zoned that way going forward. So that would be a change to the zone regulations, which if I'm accurate and Glenn correct me wrong, I think those have been updated since 2008. So we're talking now in fourteen years they've been in place. And I would, I would not recommend opening up zone regulations every time you have a specific use either. That kind of opens up a Pandora's box that everyone walking in saying, well, I have this specific thing I want. Can we make a zoning for me to appease all my neighbors understandably? So there are obviously drawbacks of opening this up in a ad hoc manner or a one-off manner.
On that, on that six o'clock closing, George, where'd you go?
George, will you step up to the podium? Jerry has a question for you.
On that six o'clock closing, as you have listed here, the point that the lady brought up about being able to get in after six o'clock for a door to wear or a gift or what, how are you going to handle that?
It's, it'll be electronic chain fence. It's going to be secured. This whole storage is going to have a chain link. You'll probably either have a barcode or a PIN code.
Their own number.
What's that?
And everybody will have their own keypad and their own number.
That's the intent of the electronic system, whether it's a card, whether it's a.
I understand the electronic system, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But I didn't see that in your, in your descriptions here. There was said, it was going to close at six o'clock, that's all I said. And I'm not actually believing what I'm at the point. Now then, when you change that point, it's not necessarily going to be closed at six o'clock. If they have the equipment in there, they'll be able to enter with a keypad.
Well, that's, that's correct. That is correct on storage. But, but, but we're going to talk about that traffic. Once somebody loads their storage unit, their average traffic to that storage unit, first of all, that storage unit's typically three to five miles within their home and they visit it once every one to two months. Our storage would not, I, I don't think our storage is going to be a huge concern because that's not even a traffic draw in comparison to a household with three cars. I, I don't think the storage is going to be the traffic issue. I think the real concern's the commercial building. I think the big heavy trucks coming in and out of the city right now within the neighborhoods create a concern. You, you had an example today, a truck. I don't have an answer for that. I mean, will, will it increase it? I don't think it's going to increase it tenfold. I think most of our trade operators are going to get shipments probably once, twice a month.
I didn't start talking about traffic.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What I was talking about was what the lady brought up about it being closed at six o'clock. And you answered that question when you said you would have electronic.
Storage would be able to be accessed. Commercial building, I mean, that's going to be open to the people that have their leases.
I'll be able to get to it.
Yes. Yes, through a keypad access.
That's what I was asking.
Okay. Sorry for, and we didn't put the whole, the plan with the electronic gate and the fence around storage in there. I didn't include that. It's in our plan.
You answered my question.
Okay.
George, I have a question. What's the capacity for RVs and boats?
We're talking about having one hundred foot building, probably twenty to thirty units at tops.
And remind me how many of the commercial buildings?
Commercial building, one fourteen thousand square foot building. We're starting the storage off with three buildings in development with potentially a, a growth area of four more. And then the storage for the, Stan, can you hear me out a word please? In the storage area, the lean-to building for the RVs and storage would be on this west side. This is, this is the entrance to, this is the fourteen thousand square foot building. There's the two storage and the RV parking would be over here. This whole area would be behind the fence. This whole area would be secured behind the fence.
And that's where you're like, are we going to?
Yes, right here.
George, can you say that to Scott?
Yeah.
So what is the site plan for parking stalls? We don't think that's an indicator of potential traffic. If you're building this to, you know, are you going to have a hundred cars parked in here?
No, absolutely, yeah, I'm sure.
So I think as we're addressing the traffic issue, we need to understand what you think fully developed this would have for people that are working. We're thinking parking stalls is probably a good measure more.
Well, and, and we put in on the front side of that where there's an entrance to the office. We've got the doors on one side and the garage doors on the back side. And I think we've got twenty-nine stalls.
I believe building codes require X number of stalls per square foot.
And we use BG Consulting when we told them that.
I have to differ, Steve.
They gave us a recommendation on IP one.
And how many parking stalls?
Parking stalls, fourteen thousand square foot. Yes, on a square footish basis. Steve, do you know?
That's all right.
The code for parking stalls per square foot or schedule?
No, I don't know off the top of my head, sorry.
Different pens? I mean, is it the whole building open or?
No, 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 there's, there's, this is intended to have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight bays. So it's not just a wedding.
Any other questions for George? Yeah, dude. So, I mean, I've talked to a lot of people, got a lot to put, which is great. And some of the concerns are aesthetics, right, for that area. You know, lighting is a concern, you know, if you've got this thing lit up twenty-four seven, it's, you know, what is the lighting plans to be, you know, do you have that figured out yet?
Well, we do have our barriers intended in our plans and that is to put a six-foot berm all the way along the residential area, put trees and establish trees on that. The entrance of our building, everything's going to face west. We're not going to, we're not, we'll have safety lights on the back, but not, not as, not as bright as the power plant is if you drive by that street down there. I mean, that's lit.
But when you go for your building permit, typically is when that stuff will happen.
Right, so what I'm hearing is there are going to be building, it's not necessarily standstill mounted.
Absolutely, that's, and we, everything underground.
So the question I have is, you know, what's the council's ability that we see a plan, you know, commitments around berms, et cetera. Do we have the ability to approve a site plan and make a requirement? If we don't see it, we don't approve it.
Glenn, that is a new question. Does the council approve site plans? Can they require a site plan to be brought back before the council?
I think you require it.
When we took this to planning and zoning, because we asked about getting the site plan done and they said, don't do it yet. Come back with your site plan, get it rezoned first and then come back because you're going to have to approve your site plan anyway. That's, that's how it was instructed to us in the beginning.
Typically, site plans are just going to be, I think, brought back to the council, can't require it.
Thank you.
Do you have the council discussion?
Yeah, man, I really appreciate all the concerns. We've heard a lot of feedback. I know the next item on the agenda is going to be kind of a similar conversation. I think we need to have a bigger discussion here. If we want to grow commercially, where are we going to do it? We want to grow as a town, we want to grow as a community that's contingent on commercial growth, where do we want it to go? Because we'll have this conversation wherever, wherever the next location is. Yeah, I mean, that's.
Containing.
They're all valid, they're all valid concerns. So how do we move forward?
I think that's a great question. I think as a city, we're limited. We don't have, we don't own the property so that we can dictate when they want to develop and what they want to develop. So I agree with you. That's why I think we've got to take advantage of the opportunities that we have. We may not have them again. This property's been available for a long, long time. And, you know, it's own residential and hasn't, you know, anybody interested. So I agree with you. I just don't know that we own enough of our own destiny to, to actually plan it. We can plan it by every decision we make or don't make. That's about the only way I see us doing it, right?
But how do we ever get that? We haven't got enough.
Get enough what?
To say that we got enough to make the decision on that. You say we don't have enough to do with our own, say that we're going to go commercial.
Well, just enough land that, that, you know, we annexed a couple of, of.
Well, just enough land that, you know, we annexed a couple of pieces of land, and one of them's proposed to be developed right now. So it's the timing of when they allow the city to annex it and they want to develop it. So we could annex it, and they still haven't developed. They could be sit undeveloped for 50 more years. So we just don't control that. And, you know, based on some of the, you know, developments coming in near us, I think we need to be trying to figure out RID programs, things like that, to get enough land and extend that we do then have the ability to say yea or nay on, do we want it to be commercial? Do we need commercial, or do we need more residential, or do we need a mix? And I'm not sure we could... I just don't think we have enough control to say, this is the only place we're going to do commercial. We don't control that. I mean, we can say no and say, yeah, it's only going to happen here, and we're not going to let it happen anywhere else. That's an option. That's kind of the option we're looking at right now.
I agree with you. Councils, councils from, in future councils, you're going to have this number special.
Every time something wants to be added, this is exactly... And that's the way it should be, right? And I do think that, you know, the plan ought to be updated. You know, we've talked about, you know, I think they mentioned, you know, Orange Street being a truck route eventually. Well, that's, you know, that's a significant endeavor. I can't even imagine the cost, even looking at another bridge with a creek, you know, that's...
I think it might even turn.
Well, I mean, so my point is, things have changed, and they will continue to change. We've got new development coming in near us. There was going to drive some road. So I think we do need to relook at that and update it, but, you know. I'm for growth, but I'm also for minimizing the impact it has on existing residents. And sometimes you can't do both, but I'm interested in trying to do both. And that's why I think all the questions about traffic, you know, if it does become bad, I would think that you need to monitor it. And, you know, 10th Street, you know, ought to be on the plan to, you know, to upgrade if it becomes a need based on... I personally don't think it will be. That's why I asked about, you know, how many people are going to be parking out there, working out there? You know, I might get busy in the morning, busy at 5:00, but in between, I don't think it'd be much different than a lot of the other streets in the city. And by the way, as we grow, there's going to be more traffic there. We need more sidewalks. We need more of that infrastructure to make it safer because we are going to have more people.
I believe our first question you had asked about, you know, shouldn't that be paved first? And I just don't see that very often. Usually, usually you kind of have the need first, and then they come build the roads. It's very rare that they say, oh, you've got some good ideas. Okay, we'll build some roads to them. They don't really do that very often. But I think, I do think, speaking to your first question, that that truck route need, that someone's going to come and turn that semi-truck down, there's a reason because there's no place to come from the south. And so they used to make some of that hairpin turn on College Street to come to the feed mill. I remember, and it was kind of a miraculous maneuver, but they did it all the time until that's remedied, and I think we're expressing more and more need to the county that it's changed, it's updated.
I don't ever see that being a truck route. I think we need to develop a truck route way before that. I think if we're going to, you know, improve downtown in our streets, then we can't have a truck route.
We gotta have trucks. We gotta have truck routes.
We gotta have a truck route. It's not going to be Orange Street anytime from 56.
Any further council discussion?
You did ask you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and go. I came out and supported from the beginning, so. I move that we accept the ordinance to rezon the property on Orange Street as presented.
All right. Ask a question here in the middle of that before we...
It's most interesting to go to...
Well, I think, I think I'd be interested in the site plan conversation around, you know, this change in the zoning, but having final approval on the site plan. So I was going to just maybe ask you...
Okay. I thought that we still had the ability to do that.
I don't think it's currently a plan, part of the process.
Okay, so... Okay, so let's do it that way. I move to approve the ordinance to rezon the property located on Orange Street with the amendment that council has the ability to approve the site plan.
Second.
Moved in second, and Jerry? Susan?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Dylan? Motion passes 5-0. Next item under new business, heritage rezon ordinance first reading. So when we say first reading on these, that means that the vote will come at the next meeting, just so everybody knows. Taking public comment now, just as we did on the prior one. So we'll ask the developer to come up first, and then once the developer presents to the council, if staff has any input from the planning commission side, we'll ask for that, and then we'll ask for the citizens to go ahead and comment. So is there anybody here from the development group that'd like to speak?
Hi, my name is Roger Johnson. I'm here with my partner Glenn Rockers. We own the property together. I appreciate you guys hearing our side of the story tonight. In 1992, Glenn and I got together and we thought, this property's for sale. Where's Baldwin going to grow? Where's the town going? It's probably going to go east. We have an industrial park coming out there. So this would probably be good for us, for what we do. Glenn and I both did dirt work. We do developments. So we decided to buy this. So it's been 30 years we've been sitting on this. We paid our taxes. We've done everything. So we bring you a very good mixed-use development plan. We give you commercial to go along with the commercial part that's there. We give you industrial so Mr. Rice can expand his hometown business into there. We have some few multifamily lots and then some residential lots. That's our plan for this whole area. That's why we're here this evening. At the planning commission, you know, I was called greedy. You know, because we're going to take this and we're going to develop it, and we're going to make money. I think trying to make money is probably the American way. So I took the concerns of the people beside us and listened to their concerns. So their biggest concern was, in the residential land, we go north and we tie the gravel road. So we come back and we said, okay, at the north end, we'll put in a cul-de-sac, but we will leave room. At some point, if the gravel road ever gets improved and the city wants to take that road through, it's there. We will deed it to the city. You know, and then they say, well, okay, you're killing our property values. The only thing I can tell those people tonight is, you let us do our subdivision, you let us do our commercial and our residential. Your property next door to us will not go down. It's only going to go up. I think we brought you a really smart mixed-use plan to grow Baldwin with, and we just get killed. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else from the development group?
Good evening, company. Dean Grove with Grove Engineering. I don't have a big presentation. Just a couple things to follow up with what Roger said, that, you know, one of the important things is, is the comprehensive plan for future use. You know, it pretty much follows that plan to a T. I mean, it's kind of gray up there. You're getting near the highway because of, those are just shadings on the drawing, but the idea is some transitional buffering. And, you know, I think too, Roger and I have talked about that the, you know, we've done an interface sequence that there's some concerns that tomorrow, all these houses are going to be in our front door. Well, all the progression will grow from south to north. So it's, again, it's not a burden that'll be placed on anybody tomorrow. But I'll be happy to answer any technical questions that, or questions that Roger needs some help answering, and that's all I had to present. All righty. Thank you.
Glenn, do we have any staff comments, or do you have any written from the planning commission?
No, I didn't attend the planning commission, so.
It didn't pass, though.
It didn't pass. They recommended.
All right. So with that, I will open up the public comment. Is there anybody here from the public that'd like to speak to this agenda item? Step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Gary Kiefer. I live at 1797 North 300 Road. We have the property due west of the proposal. In fact, our land butts up against Heritage also, our back of our land. I sent an email to all of the council members. I appreciate those that responded to me. Got to talk to a few of you. I miss talking to a few of you. I'm sorry about that. We have some concerns. One of the main reasons we have some concerns is our house, we didn't build it. We bought it. When it was built, the back half of the house is probably within 100, 125 feet of the property line. Right now, there's a bunch of trees back there. It's kind of hard to tell if they're on their side, our side. Some of them might be right on the property lawn. I can't really tell, but they've been there forever. So. Our biggest concern is building 50 homes on 20 acres. That does not fit into the existing neighborhood. Most of the homes out on 300 Road are 10-acre lots. Some people have lived out there 30 years. We've only lived out there five years. We bought it as a retirement home. Really quiet, not a lot of traffic. So we're not against progress. We're not against change. We understand that happens. We just feel like it's, you're forcing a bunch of houses. Some of them less than 9,000-square-foot lots. Cul-de-sacs with eight houses crammed on them. That's a big concern. We're worried about the drainage. We get a lot of drainages now off that field. We're worried about drainage getting worse. I would invite all of the council members to call me, and you're more than welcome to come out anytime. I'm retired. I'm there most of the time anyway. Just got to make sure the dog's not out. She doesn't like visitors. So. Then you can get a lay of the land. Looking at a satellite picture does not give you the lay of the land. Does not give you the contours, the land slopes to the sides, to ours and Woodhead's. And also slopes down into a little valley, then back up to the road. So we would, we're really concerned about that. We're concerned about the loss of the trees, since Baldwin is a Tree USA city. We're really worried about making sure the trees get replaced, not by little saplings or anything like that, but some decent-sized, preferably maple trees. Then there's also the concern about a lack of green space, no park. I can't, we can't really do much about that, but it'd be nice to see a park because Heritage doesn't have one. Other than that, that's all we have. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Rick Woodhead, 1811 North 300 Road. I also live adjacent to this property, to the east of it. Some of the same concerns Gary gave up. We're not opposed to the development. We're not opposed to the south end, whether it's commercial and industrial. We think rice manufacturing is a good business. We'd like to see it grow. We know about that. We have a problem with putting as many houses as possible into as small a space as possible in a rural area. We would like to see a better plan. I proposed a new plan. I gave it all your copy tonight. It's reasonable-sized lots. It's a straight road. It gives the sightline better when it does reach 300 Road. What I have to propose now, it's further down to the east. You can't see over the hill. It's gradually coming down. I have main concerns about my property. We're below this property. This, all this hard surface that you're going to create is going to create an extreme amount of stormwater runoff in my direction. Nobody's ever asked me about that. Nobody's ever concerned about it. I don't mind the Rocker, Mr. Rockers and Mr. Johnson making money, but they don't have to do it to an extreme. They don't have to have 47 lots, 31 residential lots, plus the commercial stuff in the front is more than adequate. According to city staff, it's more than a two-year supply of lots to be built. And there's other lots, I'm sure. I just would really appreciate your support and your leadership in this matter and let people know that, yes, Baldwin can grow in a positive manner. And like Mr. Lordson said earlier, he's concerned with residents that are there and making the impacts minimal when we do new development. I want to see that. I'd like you to see that, you know? And what I've heard, everybody's just talked to you people and said, oh, we're just going to do it like they said. We're not going to change anything. We're not going to hold the developers accountable to do something that's right. We're just going to do whatever they want because that's the way they're going to make the most money. Please consider my proposal, consider the, all the issues that are in front of you. This is not a good plan, the way they said it. We don't mind the development. We just want it done in the right manner. And we want it done safely, and we want it to not have detrimental effects to anybody in the area at this time. And if we can do that, I can support it, but I can't support 47 houses crammed in as tight as possible, close to, you know, people's property lines. It just, it just leaves a bad taste in my mouth, and I appreciate your time.
Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item?
Wendy Fogarty, 608 Heritage Drive. I also sent a letter to, I hope everybody got it, on your emails. Unlike the Neighbors of North, I'm more concerned with our commercial district right behind my backyard. I would be happy with residential on the south end. As I pointed out, there is no green space. There's no park. On Heritage, we're kind of separated from the city. In order to access the city, we have to cross 56 Highway, which sometimes is at our peril because of the traffic. It's 55 through there. There is no safe crossing. When we come and go from our homes, we have to deal with driving past our streets because cars come up behind us. And the biggest concern I have with the commercial is, one, we don't even know what's going in there and how much traffic that's going to increase, along with the proposed 50 houses, which you figure about 100 more vehicles, the light, the multifamily housing, which was an apartment, which we don't know how many units that will bring in. It's just going to increase the traffic right in that area, and I don't think this traffic study's been done on how to handle the traffic that comes in. I also, I'm for the light industrial parts for rice because it's a boot shape. If you looked at the property, it's the property towards the east of High Street. And I think High Street provides a natural barrier, and I did look up the comprehensive plan. I realize it is from 2008, but that's what we're working off of. And the property to the west between High Street and our properties along Heritage Drive was shaded in for residential. The plan was for it to all be residential. So those are the biggest concerns that I had. I will say the other part is the lack of transparency I felt with their plan. They said at the planning committee that Rice would be ready to break ground immediately, that the commercial could be done within a year, but we don't know what that is. And it would be three to five years for the residential to the north. And I think at one point, he said it could be like 20 years from now before they start the housing. I think Baldwin needs more housing than it does commercial. We have, I think I counted eight empty commercial lots on 56 Highway itself when you come into town. So my concern is that when you come in, I don't know if we can support another commercial business. And in my letter, I pointed out Casey's closes, the diner's still closed. I would love to get more businesses, but I think we need to support what we currently have and make sure they can be successful and use the empty lots that we already have before we produce a seven-acre commercial lot that may be empty, that could be housing, that we could fill. Again, and I will reiterate, as a resident, I'm not looking for a commercial district with noise and light and pollution and everything else, but I also was looking at the whole betterment for the city, and I think residential suited better for our area. So, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item?
Mike Velasquez. I live at 608 Heritage Drive. Thank you, folks, for your time this evening. Just have a couple of concerns. One is the public safety perspective, because I'm a police officer, been an officer for 20-plus years, and I worked in Baldwin as a police officer. The other concern is quality of life. So the public safety concern I have is, again, the speed and the traffic we have there with the road that would have to go into this proposed commercial and residential area. We have one road would be East High Street that go all the way to this cul-de-sac. We have one road would be East High Street that go all the way to this cul-de-sac. With of course, what's at North 250 there that goes east and west there, just north of the highway there. So my concern would be if there was a major event like a commercial fire to one of the businesses there. If you block off that area right there at East High Street and the highway there, and if eventually down the line, there were homes way back there north, maybe stuck in there. No emergency, they can get back there. If there was another emergency, like say a heart attack or things of that nature. So we'll have one road going in there with this cul-de-sac that would go all the way towards North 300. So that's one of my concerns there. Again, the speed, I'm an avid walker and I like to run in town. So I kind of take my life in my hands every day. I cross the highway there, right there at the Heritage Edition, whether I'm going to the Santa Fe Street or to East High Street. So there's no crosswalks there. All, we all know that we had that accident there in town where it's 35 miles per hour when we had someone hit. I think it was a student here in Baldwin City. So those are some of my concerns. And again, the quality of life is also important to me and that's what brought me to Baldwin City. I love the town and it seems like kind of we're trying to grow from the outside in versus grow what we have inside and go out. With again, what my wife mentioned with the commercial businesses. I appreciate the fact that, you know, we have, you know, this business coming in with a brewery and a barbecue place. But then there's been places that have been right at the main intersection of town that have closed, come in and closed. Whether it be the Cranberry Market, the restaurant there where Casey's is currently at. Like my wife mentioned, some of these businesses already closed because they don't have the staffing. Again, depending on what would come into this commercial lot or lots be right behind our houses, east of our property, whether it be possibly a restaurant, which we can't even sustain the ones we have here in Baldwin City, or possibly a gas station. One closes sometimes over the weekend because they can't staff it or some kind of low key business. Again, I'm all for growth. I want to see growth. That's what I, what drew me to Baldwin City. And so I love about this city. That's why I chose to work as a police officer for the five years I worked here. But I want to see growth from within. I love to see green space because we have lots of residents on our street, but I don't know half of them because there's nowhere for us to go. We have no park, no green space, no walking trails, things of that nature. I mean, I don't see kids playing in the streets. I mean, there's luckily sidewalk on one side of the street, but there's no park for anyone to go to. So I'd love to see a green space possibly back there. So again, thank you for your time. That's all I have.
Anybody else like to speak to this?
I'm Erica Earls. I'm at 1780 North 300 Road. That's my, that's where I grew up. And when I grew up, people coming down that road were going to our house or to the Freeburg's house, you know? Like it was pretty much, that was it. Now we have a lot of new neighbors that are great and part of why that works. And it's all, it's all been wonderful as it's grown. You know, there's probably four times as many people down that road now. But we all have similar, you know, agricultural like homes. We have similar, it's a similar development, you know, what's happened down that road. What this is, is like shockingly different development with a huge amount of infill, you know? I mean, tons of people would be pushed into that space, totally change what, the way that it is down that road. And once, you know, it's completely different from everything on each side of it, except for the one side where there is residential down there, where it won't even match to be residential on that side. So it makes more sense to me to make it residential down there and do the growth where, you know, the, continue the development where it is and not have, you know, super dense development in an area that's surrounded by agricultural. We were all kind of shocked by this. You know, we got the notice when this was going to be developed. Everybody on North 300 Road got a notice because that's the county law. But when it was brought into the city, nobody got any notice. So I understand you have to change the zoning in order to make it part of the city, right? You can't have agricultural in your city. That makes sense. But nobody ever knew, you know, we never knew that it was becoming part of the city in the first place. So it seems like a pretty like drastic change to, to all of a sudden put tons of apartments and houses in a place that was agricultural. I have similar concerns about the highway and green space, you know, that that would be, to me, if it's going to be developed with houses, I think it should be similar to what it is on all three sides, you know? Like large lots, single homes, like as big as, I don't know what the biggest zoning in town is, but I would make it as big as you can, you know, to make it match what's around it. Like that's generally what planning tries to do is not make it like boom, here's this thing and boom, here's something totally different. You know, it's supposed to be like a transition. So I, I think it's a really strange plan for that area. It would make more sense to put more people down by the highway.
Joe Torkelson, 502 Heritage Drive. I guess, you know, we've been spoiled if we live on Heritage Drive there. We've been spoiled. We get to look at Glenn's Field. There's deer, there's turkeys. I mean, we got to enjoy it for, I've lived there seven years and see deer on a nightly basis, see turkey. So we're spoiled. So I understand the frustration from everyone here. Like it's, it's a big change. We go from a field with wildlife to a duplex, a commercial building, housing, like there's some frustration. So I mean, like with Roger, seems like a decent guy. I get it. I'm a commercial, or I'm a general contractor, you know, I want to build houses. I want to do things. And it seems like the best place for the city to expand is in that field by them annexing it in like they did. So my question is, you know, for Roger, have you thought about the green spaces? Have you thought about the, the houses that currently are along that neighborhood there, you know? Is there a utility easement on there? I haven't seen the actual thing. So I mean, we have the manhole cover there. Is there a certain distance requirement from the current neighborhoods to where the property is going to be moving forward? You know, do the, the current residents there, do we have a say in, is there going to be a duplex in our backyard? Or can we prefer a single family house? I mean, like those are the questions we have. It's, it's not our property. We can't really do what we want with it, but we understand that the city needs to grow. That's where it's going to go. So I think some of the folks in neighborhood areas just kind of wondering, you know, we'd like, we'd like a park. We'd like, you know, not to stare at the side of a commercial building or like the previous people had spoke. We don't want a light shining in our house at midnight because there's a commercial building next to us. I mean, just kind of looking for some, some meeting ground. How can, how can you help us, you know, adjust to this and, you know, moving forward, what does that look like? So I will comment as well. My yard has a river that runs through it when it rains. So I'm the last house before the trees get really thick on the corner there of Santa Fe and Heritage. So I don't know what's been done as far as water runoff, any planning, anything like that. I just know you change a field, you change the drainage and it affects the current housing that's there. I guess that's all I got.
Mike Patrick, 1772 North 300 Road. And I don't, won't belabor any of the comments that have already been made. I fully support the folks that live on our road that have told you what our concerns are. And my wife and I built our home there about 13 years ago and we've enjoyed where we've lived immensely. We, we feel like this is going to change the way our living conditions are. Specifically if those are such small lots, the way they're developed right now on the plat. I can tell you that even though we've only lived in that spot for 13 years, we've been part of the Baldwin City community for 27 years. And we're the young ones on that road. And so I would just urge you to please listen to the folks that have, that have come already up and spoke about what their concerns are. They are genuine and we are sincere about our requests. So thank you very much.
My name's Ralph Earls, 1780 North 300 Road. I'm the old man on the road. Been there since January 7th, 1975. And we had to get used to Mike and Lisa moving in right west of us because we thought that was a little too close. A little too much devout, but, but they're wonderful neighbors and, and all the people on the road are dear friends. We, we do have a strong agricultural ethic down that road that you might not be aware of. There, there are two or three horse farm operations. I have some row crop and hay and have invested in land to, to keep that part of the area rural and agricultural. I would like to mention that, that the land that is proposed for this development is classified as prime agricultural land. I called the county offices to verify its classification. And for the last 10 years or so, it's been double cropped, which is an indication of the, the possibilities for that land in terms of agriculture. I don't know whether the city has any policies relating to the preservation of agricultural land in terms of development, but I think it's something that's worthy of consideration. I'd also like to mention that I, I would very much appreciate your thinking about the concept of notifying rural landowners when someone proposes a development before it's annexed into the city. Even if it's not required by county or state law, I think it would be a very beneficial thing for the community to do that. I wanted to mention too, that the planning commission, if I'm not mistaken, approved this by a vote of two to one. Two in favor and one opposed. So I think that should give you some pause as well. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you for inviting us to come comment. Hope to stay there a while longer.
Anybody else like to comment on this agenda item?
I'm Brian Wright, a little bit 503 Sibley Court. I just, I just want to make sure that there, or everybody realizes how much more traffic it's going to bring when our kids already don't have a way to cross the highway. So I know we've talked about it for the last 10 years since I've lived there. And nothing's ever been done. I know it's KDOT has to do it or is what I think I've been told. But if you're going to do all this extra development, we've got to get something figured out for how to get kids across the highway safe. It's not even safe for adults really. So I think you just consider that and think about what to do with that.
Anybody else like to comment to this agenda item?
Larry Hoffmer, 606 Heritage Drive. And I don't want to just keep repeating what everybody else said, but I for one am a little concerned about what my property value will do if I have a commercial building straight behind me. And like Joe said, we are kind of spoiled because I've lived there 17 years and I've had a field behind me the whole time I've lived there. Like I said, I don't want to repeat everything that's already been said, but I think it is going to affect our property values. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item?
Can I still talk?
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Mary Skag, I live at 1824 North 300 Road. Lived there 15 years, but my husband and I have been a part of this community since 1977. I was a teacher here in Baldwin in the schools for 13 years and then taught at Baker for over 30 years. We very much feel like we're a part of this community, even though I get frustrated when I can't vote in the city because I just know all you all and you know, want to be involved. And we have been involved. So again, yes, like someone's spoken to, you know, it was kind of a shock because we knew nothing about it. We understand that legally, you know, we, we were not, you didn't have to tell us that you were going to annex. But we really much, we're not opposed to growth. We know Baldwin is a wonderful place to be. There's been growth and it does need to be done intelligently and carefully. But our particular road, there is a definite feel as it's been spoken to agricultural. It's just, and we live on a rock road too. I mean, we're, we're not in the city as I just kind of made my point. But we'd like you to consider us as members of the community that we are opposed to not to the development as, but the intensity of it. And especially the intensity of it on the north end. I guess this is our perspective and we honor the heritage folks, you know, their perspective also. So if you would please consider that, you know, we think we could probably work together and try to come up with something that would be agreeable to all of us. If there were larger lots at the northern end, it would tie right in, you know, with what's going on and perhaps wouldn't be as much of concern with the drainage, et cetera. I know there are deer who make their run right now will be very upset about it, but you know, we can't think of all of them, I guess. But, so I guess I'm asking you to come out and visit us, walk around, see what it looks like, see what it's like, see what the feel is on North 300 Road. And please consider all of our community concerns, even though we can't vote. So thank you very much.
Do you want to speak from there?
Is it okay what I'm saying? I'm Glenn Rockers. I'm one of the owners of the property. And I live straight south of the property, across the highway, adjacent to this property. I live on a hill and, and from my office window, I can see every inch of that property. So with that being said, I'm going to be prepared or in particular what we do over there because I have to look at it every day. So, so I guarantee you that it'll, it'll be the best that we can do with that property. The, I've been an excavating contractor for 60 years. I've built a lot of streets. I've done a lot of subdivisions, a lot of everything that has to do with dirt. And that is one of the nicest piece of property that there is around town or that I had done. It lays good. I mowed it the other day and I didn't see any hoops and valleys. I don't know where those are at. But when I mowed it, if there was any, I don't know if I straightened myself out or what. But anyway, it's, we've been farming since 1992. And it's not a good piece of farm ground like, like Mr. Earls said, it's a pretty, pretty nice farm. It's not. It barely pays the taxes. And, and of course the taxes are getting higher. They're like her place else. But anyway, I feel that Dr. Roger here, I don't know, a few years ago, and we decided that it's time to do something with it. Because what I hear over and over again is that Baldwin needs more affordable housing. I hear that and I hear it and, and it's right on the edge of town. People work in Kansas City or whatever. It's, it's very accessible and, and I think it's going to be a nice, well, I know it's a nice piece of property. It's going to make a nice development. As far as green space, if you looked at the plans on the west side, there's a pretty good size detention area. It runs, runs along the backyards of the house and Heritage Edition. So a good part of those houses are going to have a lot, a lot of green space outside of their, outside of their property. So, so I hope for this, got a bit of green space there. The way, the way everything lays, there's going to be a lot of yard with green space. And, and I just, they can make a fine development. I thank you for letting me talk. Thanks.
Anybody else like to speak to this?
I'm Charlie Kiefer. And we live at 1797 North 300 Road. Thank you very much for those of you that responded to my husband's emails. I would encourage you to come out in regards to what Mr. Rocker just said. I don't think any of you would consider a drainage pond as green space in your backyard because that is what it is if you look at the plans. We are merely asking for larger lot sizes. We know we want Baldwin to grow. That's why we moved out there also. Our property value will plummet because we will be landlocked by a subdivision and a field. So to say that property values will not be affected is a bold faced lie and they know it. is a bold-faced lie and they know it. So just consider what everyone here is, is talking about. Look at the plans carefully and please come out. Our yard, our backyard is the width of this room to the property line. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to address two comments that the builder guy asked. One is, our lots are not 50-foot lots. They're 70, 80-foot lots. So if you want us to jam pack it, we can go back to 50-foot lots. We took that in consideration. You want to park, you know, we can take our detention area and we can set aside some more ground for a city park. But I want to guarantee from the city of Baldwin, you got the money to keep it up and take care of it. If you can guarantee me that, where that detention area is, we'll give you enough ground for a park. I have no problem with that. I've done this in Lawrence and Lawrence, their park and recs department would say, we don't want any more parks because we can't take care of them. So if you guys want to, if you want to tell us, you know, guarantee me, if I give you this ground for this park and we seed it and we get it ready, you'll put the whatever you want in it and you'll take care of it. That's all I ask.
Anybody else like to speak this agenda item?
I have one more question. As a member of the Palma Township Council, we are also unanimously opposed to this development. We cannot maintain that road. We don't have the staff or the budget to maintain 300 roads, especially if, you know, 200 or 300 more cars. The gentleman earlier said three cars per house, 47 houses. It's 150 times probably three flips a day, four or 500 cars going down 300 road potentially. I mean, that's ridiculous. We, that road cannot handle that. There's a narrow bridge. As far as Palma Township is concerned, we are unanimously opposed to this as well.
Anybody else like to speak this agenda item?
I just wanted to say that there is no affordable housing in this. So it's, it's kind of a misnomer because they, there's no affordable housing in this. There's no pricing or anything like that. So that's not included.
Anybody else like to speak this agenda item?
I guess now that I see this, I'll, one quick comment. So.
That's my plan.
Okay.
The front part is, the south part is, the north part is. He has.
Anybody else like to comment to this agenda item? If not, we will close public comment and council discussion. I had a few, just notes I made. So a lot was discussed when you said in residence in that area about number of houses in that development. You read in the Lawrence paper, Lawrence is actually pushing back against developers because they want smaller lots.
But we're not one.
I, please, this is council discussion. Secondly, crossing heritage, let's speed up. As most of you know, that's, that's been a big thing of mine for the last two years. I pushed KDOT to do a study out there. They did the study. They granted us a soft crosswalk out for heritage. Working with engineering right now to get that done. I was hoping to get it done by the school year. But with that being said, I did speak to KDOT two weeks ago as well, knowing that this development was being proposed because part of my initial request was to load the speed limit out there. KDOT declined that. They said there was not enough traffic in that area to load the speed limit. So I pushed back again to KDOT two weeks ago and asked him to reconsider based on this development. I have not gotten word back, but that was part of the thinking is, okay, if we want to put more residents in that area, let's revisit that. Notice of annexations. Glenn, I believe that was published in the local newspaper and before I stayed long, correct?
No, that's correct.
So that's, that's our notices on annexing property. One other person spoke about empty businesses. I get that. It's a frustration of mine. The quick shop building, I mean, we can go, 56 Restaurant, Santa Fe Restaurant, wherever, Joe's Diner, all of that, all the above. I mean, the city doesn't control any of that. We'd love to, we'd love to push those businesses, get them open once they're leased out. Or there are certain conditions put on the property. You know, it's just outside of our control. So that's just some of the, some of the comments or things that I had right now.
I, I just wanted to pick some of the loading through here. I know there are a lot of concerns, but I did, as a council member, want to discuss and respond to Roger's offer. And as far as the city's commitment to maintain a park, that's always kind of been, and I know it's, it's been a complaint for a long time, but there's, the highway isolates everybody out there and there's really nothing to do to go on a walk. There's no destination to go on a walk toward without crossing the highway. And even then, you got some, you got some hoofing to do. So that's always kind of been a, a concern of mine as well. I mean, any discussion around that one?
I, I think that'd be great. I don't see any problem why the city could not maintain and install a park out in that area. I used to live, here, it was my first, first house in Baldwin. I had small kids, so I get that concern. Glenn, do you see any reason why the city couldn't install and maintain a park?
It depends on what you're talking about as far as a park. Just mowing and maintaining that's, yeah, I mean, that's, but as far as playground equipment or something like that, whatever, that's more expensive than you might think.
Well, I mean, it'd be something that we'd have to build with a budget and a finance committee.
Yeah, that'd be a long-term project.
But I think, I, I wouldn't see a reason why we would take that off.
No, I mean, yeah, again, it's still way up to the council. But yeah, I mean, it'd be an added expense, but it's not, I don't think it's huge.
What I think tied into that is, you know, the increased traffic, getting, you know, kids across the highway, which can help increase the number that are going to do that. So I'm trying to find a, a way to, and how do we even get them from this piece over to the crossing, you know? Is there a way, I don't know if we have easements, is there a way to actually get a plan that would have a sidewalk from this to connect to a heritage sidewalk somewhere?
KDOT right away, I mean, it's working with KDOT again to get.
And I have a problem with it too. I live in, I live on Santa Fe Drive and it's always been a force of mind that there's no green space there. I was looking at the map and what if the middle way would be a light and dust floor that's right over there, put the, the apartments or whatever there and make that space with those apartments would maybe as a park. Just an idea. But I have a problem too with the, the traffic. I walk across 56 every morning at 6 o'clock and we have to hoof it across that road before the cars come. So I know what that is. And I think as far as the traffic study goes, I believe that they, they did part of that during pandemic and everyone was at home. And I was looking at that also and it was saying that during certain hours, there were only two people across the road. And at that time, there were three of us walking. So we walked across then and walked back across. So there were at least six people every day. And I know there are other people that, that walk out there. And then the other thing is, if the kids need to cross 56 and they go down High Street, High Street, there's no sidewalks on High Street. So if they want to go to the crosswalk, they would have to walk along the highway in the ditch to get to the crosswalk.
That's what I suggest. They need to have their easements, this utility easements are now on the back of the current heritage subdivision. You know, somewhere to get from this subdivision, not along the highway, to, to the current heritage process to get out of this.
Then we have to go to somebody else.
Well, that's what I was looking at. That's, that's.
They'd have to go to somebody else. And I, I also agree with people that live on 300 Road. Having an exit off of this development on 300 Road is just crazy because the road's not built for it and it's a county road, so we can't do anything with it. And I just think it's a bad idea.
But they, they changed their plan based on the feedback they got from the bankers. The whole second.
Well, but they don't show that on there.
I think they just talked about leaving a lot empty for future potential and, you know, and I fully understand the traffic on 300 and I fully understand the worst-case scenario on emergency vehicles. You know, so in my mind, you know, how do you minimize traffic but maybe have a worst-case scenario where you can get emergency vehicles in there? To me, if we felt that was a requirement, I would support, you know, minimal road with do not enter emergency vehicles only on both directions. So there would be no entry and exit from that subdivision on the 300 Road, except if there's an emergency. So I think in my mind that that would, the current plan would, there is no road. If there needed to be one, we would do, you know, I would propose we would do it in a very selective way to meet that requirement. So to me, that, that isn't an issue anymore. You know, the issue we heard is, is just the density and the view and aesthetics that it's going, it's going to happen. I don't think that would work. Why not human nature? If you're really there, we're going to go. What is a two-track? A quad? Whatever's minimal, you know, if it's.
It's gravel.
Yeah.
Just gravel.
Just gravel or. Yeah. I mean, that's not convenient really to get anywhere, as convenient as the highway is. I don't know why you would do that. On purpose? On an unimproved road. If you had to. Well, if I lived there, I thought that maybe we would and really I would come back. No one would have to know.
I guarantee these people won't do by law.
I know. Again, I, I think, I think that concern in my mind has been addressed by not putting a road in, in the current plan. And then if we had to, if we felt it was necessary, if the emergency police and emergency vehicles said, hey, you really need this, yeah, especially if they have a commercial district on the, on the south end, then we make it emergency vehicle home. And of course you're going to have people, but you're going to have people that can drive down the road anyway. It's not a private road, right? So we can't keep everybody off of that. I think this minimizes it down to, you know, something that would be so.
We kind of had this conversation, I think, back when we were trying to get access from college to Summit Street, back in West Baldwin, not emergency access. And it never got finished. It's just there and it's across there. And once they can.
Right, right.
Another council discussion?
And I just think, you know, you know, you hear about growing inside out. I'm on board. How do we make it happen? The city doesn't have the ability to control that. We talked about this on the other development is we have to take advantage when we do have the ability to grow. And, you know, I think all these things for the developer are, you know, should be brought up and maybe happen. But again, the city can't force a developer to develop in a specific fashion. They have to want to do it the way they want to do it. And we either accept it or we don't. And they may not develop, right? So minimal control there. I do think it needs to be a give and take. We've already, we've already heard a bit of a give here. So, you know, so again, we don't have control of that. And the other thing is we gave clear direction on this RID. You know, we don't have affordable housing. We don't have a spectrum of housing prices. And, you know, what I think they proposed is a range of housing. And so you look at lot size because if you look at home prices, you know, starting dictatorial that is lot size. You're not going to put a giant house on a small lot. You put a smaller house, they're going to be more affordable on the smaller lots. That's, you know, so we couldn't make them all half acre, three-quarter acre lots. We're going to get a lot fewer houses. And they're not going to be affordable for the lowest end of, of the affordability spectrum. So I think the developers did do what they thought we asked them to do. And, you know, so, so to me, you know, hearing the negative side of it, but as a council person that was really trying to get a variation of home prices, I looked at it as a good thing, you know, that we need to do more. We need to find more places to grow. And again, I don't know where the next lot, you know, next developer's going to want to come and do anything. This might be the last one for years.
Yeah, I was going back to, thinking back to our last discussion and basically we are in a position that we can't be piggy. And, and these are all things that Baldwin desperately needs. Like, I think your plan is a fairly aggressive one. I think that there's some contingencies that we can add in, like the park. I think green space on that side is, is critical. Sorry, it's part about being on the council. We want to make everybody happy and just be careful.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we, it's important to remember the spirit of RID. And that is to help towns like us who haven't been able to lure developers for decades. And that's, that's, you know, it used to only apply to counties out in western Kansas that had a certain population below, you know, X level. And the state finally allowed cities like us and counties like ours to, to utilize the program because we got to grow too. And it's really hard, especially with lot prices, you know, in Douglas County to lure that, you know, level of growth down here in Baldwin. So there's really no other way to create that spark than a program like RID and NRP that we have in town as well. So kind of important to remember that too. This is a, this is a rare moment that you kind of know what's left.
I probably don't like change in my lifestyle and anyone else does. But for this situation, and now that Roger's stepped up and said that they would work on building a green space, for this situation, people, I'm sorry, but I would have to vote for this. Because like they, they have said, our position as a council member, we have to do what we can for the city and try to be as nice with the people as we can. And like she said, this is one of those deals I have to make a decision on. But I would have to vote for this. You can shoot me tomorrow.
So, drainage plan, you know, assuming that has to be developed and approved by engineering. Yes. Should make it no worse than it is today, possibly better.
Dean, he says four enters.
Yes, that's correct.
So people can, at home can hear you. Thank you, Dean.
I'm usually not enough for that. But you are correct. I've done a preliminary evaluation, set up the detention areas. It's kind of all dependent on zoning and what's going to happen and where everything is and, you know, kind of a final configuration. But yes, right now, BG, I believe as you're still your engineers of record and they review all my, all my driving studies today that, that I provided. So it's, it's not set in stone just because without all the zoning and the former plat kind of generally laid out, it was difficult to assess each lot.
Wouldn't be to more negatively impact houses that are existing to that.
I don't know. I mean, it'll go through BG, the engineer, to review it, that it's adequate per your regulations.
Any further council discussion? I'm listening.
This is the commercial piece of, you know, Glenn.
No, it's not.
You know, I don't know how, if that makes it viable for this, you know, development. Obviously there's a plan that they've got. You know, it's CP4, so we can look in there and see all the potential uses that that would be. You know, and, you know, I just am very leery about, as a council person, trying to, you know, make assessments on whether a commercial entity is viable in a community. You know, that's what the business is for. They're going to go validate that. They're going to come in and make large investments because they think it, you know, it is viable. For me to arbitrarily say, you know, I don't think we need another restaurant in town or I don't think we need another, you know, Chinese, you know, it's just not, it's part of what I think a council should do. We should set space available and then let the, let the market decide, you know, what, what makes sense and what doesn't. And do you end up having some vacant buildings? Yes, that's part of what happens, right? Ideally, you have other businesses that move in and we see, you know, that happening sometimes down in your, for example. So I don't know, we can look at the zoning and see what potentially will go in there. I don't know what's, or if they've even got. there, I don't know what's, or if they even got interest from commercial, you know, entities to come in there, but, um, you know, if you're gonna put it anywhere, that's the place to put it. You know, I think for residential there, you know, right across from Rice and that piece, it's gonna be less attractive, is just being there, right, across from what they're doing, um, you know, as opposed to maybe just having, you know, a, a gas station or whatever might be coming there, a mall, strip mall, or just some businesses. I mean, that's my thought, and I don't know if they, I don't think we can come back and say, you can't do that, or we could make it a requirement as a council, but they could also say, well then, no thank you. You know, we're not gonna develop this space, so that's my concern about ability to really draw what we want in here versus what they want to do. You think?
If I lived on Heritage Drive, I would not want a commercial building in my backyard. And, you know, if you took that space and put housing in there and made the lots bigger, you know, maybe that would be a solution, I don't know. I'm not an engineer, but I, I cannot approve a, a commercial building in that building.
Any further council discussion? This is agenda item. All right, this is for free, so the vote would be the next meeting. All right, next agenda item, 726 High Street proposal. Ryan, do you wanna step forward?
Sure. I have a little...
Good, everybody's leaving.
Um, I'm Ryan Robinson. Where do I live? I live at 1420 Woodson Road.
Guys, if you'd like to talk, if you go out in the corner. Go ahead, Ryan.
I live at, uh, 1420 Woodson Road, and I submitted a proposal to, uh, well, it's kind of a two-phase proposal to lease the space there at 726 High Street, um, which I, I'm a little bit unprepared on this, just because I don't even know what the lease amount is, um, but that's kind of the norm for me. Um, the, the first phase of this would be that we would just kind of take over that space, um, wanna do, uh...
Can you shut the door? Of course. Thank you. No? Can you close it? Thank you. Sorry.
No, that's perfect. Um, we would, you know, and I guess to give some background with this, is, uh, I, I'm buying the, the railroad, the Midland Railroad, and so, uh, th- there's kind of a long, a long-term plan with why we want that space. For me, um, I look at a, a potential that people would ride the, they would ride the train, you know, and then, and on phase two of this, we would turn that into like a little ice cream shack, and so every, every kid, um, that would come ride the train, they'd get a little wooden nickel, they come in, and for us, it's a way to drive traffic from the train to downtown Baldwin. Um, I've got 20 years of, of, of driving economic development, that sort of thing, through tourism, that sort of thing, and that's kind of why the railroad landed, you know, on my lap. Um, so that's kind of the phase two of it. Phase one is just having the space to possibly push ticket sales through there. Um, I don't know if we'll actually probably need to do that, I think we'll probably sell out here within the next month, um, which to give maybe the council just a little update on that, we've already sold 16,000 tickets. Um, the highest that Polar Express ever did was 21,000. Um, we're looking at, we will probably do between 30 and 35,000, um, tickets, which I'm glad everybody left, because that sounds like a lot of traffic that nobody wants in this town. So, um, but that's the plan. Um, you know, 97% of those tickets that are sold are all, uh, are all outside of Douglas County, so, you know, my opinion...
I have to ask you.
Sure.
Is there a sales tax on those tickets?
Casey, absolutely. Every time I give him an update, that's his thing, he's a good mayor. Um, the other, uh, part of this phase one, and it's just a matter of, some of you guys know me, so like, it's a matter of how crazy you guys will allow me to get, but I look at that, that, and I don't know what you guys call that space, I don't know what you call it. I call it the shack, so...
It used to be a gas station.
That used to be a gas station? Okay, cool. Um, so...
It was a restaurant.
It used to be a restaurant, great. Well, um, in this little foggy brain of mine, I would love to turn it into this winter into a gingerbread house. So that's what I would love to do with it this winter, um, making sure that we had an agreement that we didn't do anything permanently damaged to, to the space, but I look at that, it's the middle of town square, you guys are already doing an amazing job with Christmas. I'm kind of Mr. Christmas myself, I got a herd of reindeer, I got the whole thing going. Um, I look at that space, it's a gingerbread house. I think every person that comes into town for the train, they're gonna come there, they're gonna come downtown, they're gonna get their picture taken, they're gonna check in on social media, it's a cool thing, so that's kind of the name of the game for me, I like to do cool things, so that's, that's, uh, that's what we got planned for this winter, if we're allowed to do it.
Any questions for Ryan?
What happened to the last one? She decided to back out?
Yeah, she decided to back out because there's no sewer to the, we didn't know that at the time, there's no sewer to the building.
The water?
Right, and so she couldn't, well, there's a way to sort of get around it, but it would have taken a lot for her to do it. It would have been like a food truck, uh, if you've seen those in operation.
Are you aware, are you aware of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, we look for problems, that's, that's my, that's my thing.
Right here, buddy.
Yeah, I have to look for it, it looks for you. Right spot. So she has since backed out of the agreement, because she can't do what she wanted to do. Any other questions?
I read her.
So, open the door here for Ryan and his proposal.
What now? Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't have any more questions.
What's he ask?
Well, he just wants to rent the space, I mean, uh, we haven't really talked about it, so that's, we just promised, honestly, we promised straight to council for getting Ryan's just proposal for use. I would say you almost do the same thing you were with...
I mean, you wouldn't change it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't change it.
You swat, swat...
Take advantage of an outsider?
We're, we're the one, yeah. I think we gotta switch out the name, I mean, the council has to prove.
Are you aware of the lease terms we...
No. Absolutely not.
It's $200 a month plus a zero.
Yeah, right, right. No, I figured that out with the train already, that's how. Oh, you're with the train? Cool, yeah, up, up 35%.
No, it's 200, uh, we had a lease for $200 a month.
That's great.
Didn't change.
For five years.
Not graduated yet, yeah. It's super easy.
Yeah, I mean, this, yeah, this will be, uh, this is not the American way, 'cause this will never make a dime, but, uh, it will be something fun, and I think it'd be something really cool. Um, the only thing that I don't know, you know, I'm assuming you guys aren't gonna give me free rein, 'cause that, I, I would, like, that's a pretty, you know, notable spot.
I think your agreement, any changes had to be improved.
Sure, sure.
But other than that, I mean, you wanna decorate or whatever, that...
What are you thinking about doing, renting reindeer and letting it pet it or something?
No, 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 I'm thinking about turning that into a gingerbread house.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, but I won't, I won't bring reindeer into, to the, uh, in there, no. I, I thought about putting them over in Sullivan Square. Yeah, I mean, whatever you guys let me do, I'll do it, so...
Pretty fertilizer.
Yeah, sounds good enough. I will need a motion, second to approve a lease, switching out the names on the current lease.
I think you should look at it first.
I believe Ryan's really worried about it.
I've never even rode on a train, just so you know.
I've never ridden a train.
No, we'll, yeah, we'll, uh, I, I've, I've looked at it, and, uh, and I do come from a construction background, and the, and the problems that we've talked about with the sewer, those are all things that we can address, and, uh, yeah, well, it's all figure-outable.
Is there any council discussion? No, I don't entertain a motion.
I mean, we approve this, no, uh, Baldwin City proposal.
I see. Move in a second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Have fun.
That's incredible, thanks, guys.
We'll see.
An easy one.
Thanks for sticking with us for two hours.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, thank you for putting me down. We like to hit it behind them.
Okay, next, item on the agenda is 211 Highway 56 property. Go ahead, I wanna shoot this to you, can you get any communication?
Right, yeah, Chris is here tonight, all right, yes, you are, yes.
Chris Hofstadter, 919 Gessara Circle, Baldwin City, Kansas. You guys are, uh, going easy on me tonight, so, uh, in fact, I think everybody that would be upset with me left, just like a minute ago, so, maybe even the last guy, but, um, anyway, I put in the proposal to, uh, hopefully get approval to move forward with discussions or negotiations regarding 2165 Highway, uh, with the purpose of, uh, putting a plumbing slash septic business on that lot. Um, I think it's a business that would benefit the community, bring jobs to the community. I think it's a business that's not, it's not niche, it's not a fad, it's, it's something that's never, never gonna go away, it's, it's gonna be useful regardless, so, uh, it may not be the most attractive business, uh, but I think it's important to remember with the, where we're at, you know, eh, what type of businesses will the community sustain? And I didn't give you guys anything regarding like a lot setup or anything like that, I probably should have done that, I, I apologize, but I, the intent is if you were to look at, look at the overhead view, uh, there's a spot kind of up towards the front where there was a trailer at one point in time, I'm thinking about putting like a, a, a three-bay slash office Morton building there, that, hopefully dress it up a little bit, so it's just not ugly, you know? In that vicinity, probably a road, uh, on the west side, going past the building, maybe one time down the road, depending on, on what happens, maybe one on the other side of the building, but, but it's not really suitable for that right now, just due to the grade and, and things like that. Um, right now, the lot's big enough, uh, if I'm as successful as I hope to be, I think at some point I would probably want to kind of build that grade up going to the ditch, so I could gain maybe another 30, 40 feet out of it. Um, while, you know, obviously we have to make sure it drains the way it should, but I don't think that's gonna happen overnight. Um, so that's kind of, kind of my plans, I, I foresee it, potentially maybe six, eight people within the first year, be, be quite honest with you. Uh, in fact, the, the feedback I've got from, from realtors, inspectors, other plumbing companies, mechanical contractors, even people in Johnson County, that I have people that really would just as soon put me to business, put me to work now, so I think, I think it will, it will work out. Um, it's an opportunity to make some revenue in other areas that we bring, you know, into the city as a taxable income, right? So I think the idea is to, see from a septic perspective, you have basically from the outskirts of Johnson County, all the way to Topeka, you have a, a population that runs I-70, that you don't have that kind of septic business on any, any side of town but this west side. So basically from Tope- Topeka to like DeSoto, got around to Lake, to all that, that's, there's a big circle there, that's, that's a great septic territory. At the same time, the sewer side of the business is good for Lawrence, Johnson County, Topeka, wherever the work may lead, uh, because I don't think we're gonna be restrictive, especially not in the beginning where we work. You know, if I'm restricting, restricting the areas I serve, it's because I've got so much business, I just can't, can't really handle it, so, uh, that's kind of, kind of the plan there. Um, I think with the building up front, and I, I will tell you the plan, i- if there're... I have one septic truck that's being fabricated right now, uh, it's a smaller one, it's actually one I sent in a picture that you got, that's a 2,000 gallon tank, we're just gonna start with a small one. Uh, down the road, I may purchase a bigger one if things are successful, so potentially there could be a couple septic trucks in the back, um, couple utility service body trucks, maybe a, a Mini-X, Skidsteer, that kind of thing in the back, but I think with that building up front, like I wanna put it, you know, some, some chain link fence, and I'm not opposed to the little, you know, the little, uh, binding, you know, cha- things you put down in between the chain links or something like that, that's not, not a big issue for me, I think, in the long run, so, I mean, it's, you know, I, I, it's, it's, it won't be, it's not tremendously pretty, it's not like somebody's putting up a, a pretty boutique or something, but, you know, we do the best we can if it's, you know, if it makes sense.
You shall counsel, uh, what your offers for the dollar amount?
Uh, well, I, I threw, I'll be honest, I threw out 45,000. Uh, the reason for that, probably the biggest appeal to that site for me is, is price. Um, as they mentioned earlier, there's not a whole lot of commercial property in town, there's not a whole lot of leasable property, especially for a small business startup, and I can tell you just in equipment alone, I'm looking at $450,000, and I am one man. So, obviously, if I can negotiate, I, I wanna do that, you know, simply because we're pretty soon gonna get to a place where it's like, okay, now I'm getting uncomfortable. So that's kind of why I threw that out there, I felt like it sat there long enough, in fact, the lease expired on it, so I don't, you know, I don't know what other interest you're really getting there. Um, I can tell you the lot around the corner is more appealing, but it's also more money. So, uh, the one by the mechanic shop, you know, that's for sale, you go around there, it doesn't need all, it doesn't need as much grade work, it's probably better suited, but, you know, it's one of those things when you start up, it's like, hey, let's just, let's get going and, and see what happens, and my thoughts would be long-term, say, say down the road that I felt like I outgrew it, uh, my thoughts would be to build a building in such a way that it's either sellable or leasable to a viable business, where, and build it in such a way that it, that it's set up for whether it be a mechanic shop or some type of contracting business, or something that, where somebody else could use it if I wanted to lease it or sell it, you know what I mean? If that were to ever happen, so, uh...
So what do you do exactly, pump septic system?
Uh, we'll do all kinds of things. So we will be a licensed plumbing contractor, a licensed septic pumping installation, uh, and possibly design contractor.
Where are you going to dump?
Well, it depends on the county, so if I, if I dump it in, in, or if I pick it up in Douglas County, I gotta take it up to the proper waste disposal center here for Douglas County, so it depends on the county that I, that I pull the, the waste from, so...
I don't run port bodies?
No. I have no interest in that. At a hundred dollars a month? No. No, sure. Now, what, are, so the services we wanna offer...
You will install septic systems in new construction.
We will do that, too, so, so sewer and septic, right? So we will do drain cleaning, okay, and jetting, if you, if you're familiar with what jetting is. We will do, uh, sewer repairs, uh, whether that be excavate sewers and repair those, or even linings of sewers, uh, that's getting more popular. We'll probably eventually get into pipe bursting, you know, when that, when that's...
That's when you pull it through, I don't want to...
Right, also, yeah. And then we'll also do septic pumping, we'll do septic repairs and maintenance programs on filters, and we will do installation of septic systems, so, yeah.
You got a...
As far as the equipment goes, too, just so you guys know, what, here's what a lot, a lot of what you see, a lot of the time you see some excavating company, that gets into septic systems, right? Because they wanna keep that equipment running. So you see these excavating companies with the biggest equipment, because they're excavating companies, and they do septic's too, okay? My goal is not to buy the biggest equipment in town, my goal is to be efficient, to have equipment just big enough to do what I need it to do, which honestly isn't that big. You're talking an E-42, E-50 excavator's probably as big as you need, which isn't that big. Uh, you're talking a 595, just... Uh you're talking a five ninety-five, just medium size skid steer, you know, that kind of thing, and uh some pickups and trailers, so. Uh I foresee probably never getting above like two, at least not in this location, getting above, say, two installation repair crews, two pumpers, and maybe a couple vans that are running around doing kind of drain cleaning and jetting. So I don't see it being this massive operation, if it was, I'd probably buy another little property closer to the city. Because if, if that's, you know, if that, kind of, that's more your sewer drain cleaning area, right? So I'd probably try to look for something there and just split those services up and keep more of the septic stuff here would be, be probably the plan, so.
Can you pull, can you pull a ten inch pipe to an eight inch main that's already there in the ground?
Can I pull a ten inch pipe?
Can you pull a ten inch pipe, those plastic pipes that you stop that phone through?
Through an eight inch main?
Take the eight inch out and know it breaks as you go through, but can you do that?
Typically, the, the only thing I've ever seen is where if you're doing, if you're doing an eight inch, you're pulling an eight inch through. So maybe I'm not the guy to, to answer that question, so.
In, in Wichita, the water franchises, I saw a show.
Did they do that?
No, they didn't do that, but they pulled pipe through, and as they pulled pipe through, they're breaking the old.
Right, yeah.
Dickie clay.
But if you're doing an eight inch, you're typically pulling an eight inch through.
So you can't, you can't raise that number, that's my question.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure. Because out of all the services we're gonna offer, pipe bursting is not one that I'm real skilled at yet, so it's something that's coming later, it's not gonna come out the gate. Really, the linings are getting really popular these days, too, and it's kind of, I don't know if you're aware, that's kind of like taking a sock and blowing it through, and it hardens, it's got like a fifty, seventy-five year warning on it, yeah, yeah, but.
Uh we're talking about selling property, not fixing sewers.
I wanna know about it.
I, you know, I'm curious how, how big, how big a mains you guys have in town, anybody know? How big they get?
Sure, I know.
Just curious.
Probably it's got big enough to take care of the sewer comes out of my house.
I was gonna say, our machine will do up to eighteen inches, so.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Tell them, tell them, call them.
I need a motion to do that. Didn't know this is the lot next to the old interbell. Next to the creek, across from Cody Anos. It was listed for two or three years, the listing expired about a month ago.
What, what was it listed at?
I did not recall, I mean, you were at every price.
I think it was upper fifties, like fifty-six to fifty-nine or something, I don't remember, somewhere around there.
We're always looking for fifty to sixty thousand, he's offering forty-five.
How do we feel about forty-five?
I think as, as long as that's been on the market, I think we move on. I mean, I, that property was bought in twenty fourteen. So you said, I sat on it for almost ten years, so.
What am I getting into? Wait a minute.
No, I appreciate you mentioning everything about, you know, obviously, that's a, that's a pretty, a lot of eyes on that piece of property in and out of town, um just, you know, not having it too cluttered up is kind of a, that'd be nice.
There's an advantage to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it's got its pros and cons, I, I, and I think for me, though, the big, like I said, the biggest advantage is trying to keep it cheap, because you know, eh, there's such an investment to try to throw down on, hey, this place is perfect, and you guys know as well as I do, everything's inflated. People want serious money for everything, and, and it can totally change the game plan depending on what it is, you know, so. Yeah, that, I'll be honest, that's the biggest for me is the big, you know. So much is online anymore, and I'm not saying, and I think you guys have, what, like seventy-five, eighty thousand people roll down that road every month? I think, cause I was talking to a billboard company one time, and I think that's the traffic that they figured you guys had, or at least what they were telling you, right, so I mean, that, that is an advantage, don't get me wrong, but.
I think it's an interesting thought, I mean, said, in, entering off of highway fifty-six, or is it gonna be off acre?
So probably both. So my, my thoughts are roughly, when I, when I look at that, I look at the road right away. My thoughts are with that building is I can probably put one or two parking spots in front of it, because it angles there. And that's about all I'm gonna fit there, but it's not a high, like walk-in type business, right? And then I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to put a gate closer to the bell office, right, on that property, to the, to the west side, and I'm gonna try to put a gate straight down on the backside from that, so you could drive for, right in from one to the other. In the beginning, I plan to use that back street.
And you are aware that KDOT won't allow any more access to the office, is that right?
Any more as?
New, any new?
New entrances?
New access points off of fifty-six highway?
Okay, so, so what is there now? None?
I don't, I, I'd have to look at the GIS.
I think it was today, it's a ref.
It was shared at one point, but I don't know what it is.
It was what?
It was, it was shared.
See one on Google, one's one of the.
Yeah, and I think most of the time they entered off of Baker.
So how, how does, KDOT says nobody can use their road anymore, or?
Not any more access points, cause they, cause of the safety. That's when actually that road in that area is gonna get realigned, so they're shutting down two roads already interacting.
Can, can we further the discussion based off of that information?
You can, I mean, if you wanna rescind the offer, tell us to hold on, you can, I just wanna make sure you're aware that more than likely KDOT will not allow a new access point off of that lot. You would have to enter from Baker.
Well, that's good to know, so I, I, I think right now it would be verbally contingent upon, upon that, you know, since we're not really signing a contract, I think today, I'm just trying to see if we can kind of move forward with those details, you know? So, I mean, that, that would be a big issue, I'm sure.
Yeah, Washington streets getting shut down, and then first or third, third streets get moved over to the east.
There's no, there's no access from third to that? There's no access from third to that, there's not a gap between Bell and the car wash?
The Baker suits on the backside of it.
But I'm asking if you can get to that from third?
Yeah. By going on the Baker.
But not in between?
No.
There's no, okay.
So, yeah, I mean, so long as you guys are okay with, with us moving forward with it, that's, that's really all I'm concerned about today, I mean, we can I mean, if that's the case, I might change my mind, just so.
Yeah, that, I'm just trying to open transition, I wanna make sure that you are aware of everything, um because we don't know a lot about that property, the city, prior city administrator purchased it, um so
Okay.
Been trying to get it back into the hands of the practice sector.
Okay. Okay, awesome. Isn't anything else, else for me?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Council discussion?
At, at this point, I'd probably just will wait, yeah. Glenn, if you wanna reach out to him tomorrow, just to
Right, yeah, that's no problem.
He's still interested in it.
They are gonna realign that whole section, there probably in the next two years.
Yeah, but they're not gonna allow.
They're not gonna, no, KDOT's first.
They wanted to take away access point off of, from the dime out there.
Where's the easements, are they realigned?
I forget, I would have to go back and look at all those maps again.
No, they're not taking any of that off.
No, no, not anymore. Yeah, that's all been done, so.
All easements are already.
Yeah, we did that, seems like forever ago, but.
But I wanted to bring that out, I want somebody back to surprise, sitting there.
We already had a lease law for you.
All right, and with that, we'll move on to the high street rezonance, first green. We have a full ground for this one? Glenn?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the, it's the night for reading. This is over on High Street, this is actually just west of where the, the mill is there, and there's there's storage units already, there, there's a map that we added on to that, cause I actually didn't know where this was, went through the planning commission unanimously. Nobody opposed it, nobody showed up, um and they wanna go from residential to industrial, they wanna expand the storage into that area, so that's what they're doing. Okay, if you see the last, the last piece of, well, it's up here actually, right off of High Street, and it's just yeah, the storage units are already, they're already there. Who's that? I don't know who it is.
What's the, what was the purpose of that?
Storage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's a, it's a theme here tonight. I don't know why, all these things all happen at the same time, it's, it's always spooky, but it always happens like this, I don't know why. Light industrial, now we go from a residential to light industrial again, but uh nobody in, nobody in the neighborhood or anybody else in the town showed up to oppose.
Have you seen the one in Baldwin Junction? That thing is huge. That storage, have you seen those, the storage out there? Huge, huge. And then we got, I mean, they're a long way along. That thing covers that mark.
Well, anyway, that, that is the, uh, like I said, this is the first reading of it. So I don't know if you had any questions about it, whatever, this one kind of was pretty low key compared to the other ones we've been dealing with, so.
Any council discussion on this one?
I don't know if rezoned stuff for one night here.
Did, did, did you ever say who it was?
I, I forget.
Who owns it now?
Yeah.
Andy Schrock owns it now, I don't know.
I don't know who's buying it.
Andy Schrock is, oh, so, I took, Raymond Chris?
I have no idea.
I don't, I don't know the, like somewhere it's gonna be, but.
So, I would suggest we put this thing stipulation on this one that we did on the other one, that we'd like to improve the site.
Yeah.
We wouldn't do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's any problem, yeah, treat them equally. Yeah.
I mean, I think we need kind of consistency. I'm thinking consistency.
Okay.
All right, council, what do you report budget finance guy?
We didn't have a meeting, next one, meeting on Friday?
I don't think we, do we need a budget finance meeting?
Uh, I will be, I'll be out of town actually on Friday, so. If that makes any difference to you.
So, the next scheduled one would be the twenty, or?
Twenty-third and twenty-third, yeah.
Twenty-third, seven forty-five AM, second floor, city hall. Yeah, we kind of, do one here, I'll try and get through it, um so, yeah, we last met on the twenty-second, I believe, yeah, we did. Had another discussion around the city logo, um we, last time the council spoke about the, uh, the alternate logo, we, this, the soft logos, we kind of called it, um sort of ultimate logo for, for website usage, et cetera, obviously, the city logo on police cars, the water tower stays the same, all those. Um but this one was kind of gonna be like sort of used on the website. We didn't really have some clear direction on what that was, had some ideas to toy around with a little bit more, kind of maybe find it more of a purpose. Um I think Glenn's been working on that, um different variations of it, maybe find different, uh, more specific use for it. The Bauer Building, we had a couple updates on that. As of the Thursday before the twenty-second, the remediation had begun. And they were hoping in a couple of weeks, which should be right about now, to have it the point where contractors can tour the building and start giving bids on stuff, and breathe the bowl, et cetera, see what portions of the wood floors are salvageable, the scoreboard, um that's something they want to review too, I think that's something they want to salvage. Bid has not been put out yet, they're gonna try to write in, uh, a clause, we requested to have, um, local sub preference in that process. The new timeline, um four weeks to bid process, this is beginning with twenty-second, so I'm gonna go from there, six weeks to RFP, um waiting back from ship oh. Here's some specific comments on that. The estimated completion would be approximately uh six to eight month construction window, possibly May, June of twenty twenty-three for completion. We did get some pretty good news back, um the state legislator voted, um we would now be eligible for forty percent. Let, let me say this right, Casey, the tax credits, it went from twenty percent to forty percent?
Yeah.
Correct, correct, yes. So there's some caveats there, um you know, they're not always a hundred percent paid out. Usually, you know, maybe ninety-five cents of the dollar would be really good if it was a local buyer. Um but definitely, definitely good, good news on that side of things, more, more, more money that, um, that would have to come from the fundraising and, yeah. Yeah, 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 for sure. Um the crosswalk at Eighth and Ames, uh we had a discussion about that, crossing guard, you've been hired. Um they're posting it again, I guess there was some limited hours there with that crossing guard, so it is being posted again. We requested a study for that stuff, but you probably know the deal on that.
I did request a study, um I, I have not heard back again from KDOT, they actually reached out to us after the kid was hit. And so that's why I put in a formal request, but I followed up with them two other times, and he's my respondent to it, so. My next step is probably a email to Lieutenant Governor. Couple weeks ago.
So, um then with the garden shed was discussed, garden shed, gas station, the, the building that, uh, that Ryan was here speaking about, and uh he's, you know, turning it into their house, um basically the discussion around, uh, the, the previous person, uh, no longer able to use the building for reasons. Listed there with the sewage and the water, um this is about the point in the meeting my wife called saying my son fell off his skateboard. Susan has the final three.
He had to leave abruptly.
He was alright, a couple teeth got knocked loose, was the situation.
Uh after he left, we talked about the, the trail, um the federal transportation grant funding was declined, but there will be more opportunities to apply. Um and then we discussed Chamber Main Street, um the executive director recently resigning. Uh I know the eight twenty-three Chamber meeting, they were supposed to discuss what direction to go as far as leaving the Chamber and, and deciding to make, you know, the Chamber of Main Street as one as it has been, or two separate entities. We just kind of discussed, um, some of the cons with the two different entities with, um finding two different time directors, uh, smoke on the bricks, like we talked about sidewalk signage, um running it, anything through CDC for approval. Just so there's no specific ideology or political stance is communicated that can cause any adversity.
Uh, yeah, and then I, we, the next, uh, the next meeting will be on the twenty-sixth, four o'clock, second floor, city hall.
What's eight to Susan?
We have not met since the last meeting, meet again, we'll see to be day, yeah, Tuesday, the thirteenth, at four o'clock, and I don't currently have anything on the agenda.
Public voice?
Oh, we haven't met, uh, since the last meeting, and our next meeting is this Thursday, at four o'clock.
She's playing stuff.
We've met since we were the last, since we were the last council, so.
If we have any other discussions.
We did? Okay, so they updated. They all, they all see the same, so. I couldn't tell with Zoom after, when you'd be updating that, cause I read the minutes, I thought you gave it.
Yeah, I hear the update, and we met.
It's just, okay, so, um, more work. So we're trying to take all the input we got, all the sources, and really just try to get them into a higher level of present project based, is outcome based. What are these outcomes we're looking for, that all these things that people have listed, council, everything, kind of get that into maybe three, so we've got the three um priority, what are the pillars? Yeah, yeah, pillars, um focus areas, you know, uh, key performance areas. So in, in, in those, we need to have three or four high level outcomes that we're trying to drive, and then underneath all that, we have all this, all the things we had to input drive and all that. So the next meeting Friday, it's Friday three.
So the next meeting Friday, it's Friday three, Second Floor City Hall, I believe, three o'clock Friday. Um, we're gonna try to come for, come together with getting those high-level suggestions to bring back to the council, and work session, and see if we can't get this to like the next level, say, okay, here's, we all agree with this, and then kind of just final shaping of the strategic plan and we try to publish that. It's really just a lot of conversation on all the input, and how do you make any sense out of that? And, and it won't be, and there is no recommendations, and this will, this will bubble up. What are we missing that you guys, that's not here that you personally don't see? And then do these make sense as key performance of the focus areas? And that's gonna be the, the plan, then. Then what we discussed is, then, once we have those, and it's really up to the, you know, department heads to, everything they do needs to really support one of those key performance areas, or ideally supports that, right? So if you wanna do more reliable, i- ideally, they're measurable, more reliable utilities, well, department heads, when you come forward with your budget request, you ask for something, how does that impact this key performance area? How's that gonna help? Or, or do we miss, miss something? So it's really just shaping everything we do, where does it fit, and then how do we... I think we'll have something we can probably be actionable next time, at least have a good discussion, and probably do some follow-up and fine-tune it in the future. When do we talk in the work session?
Next Tuesday?
Remember, right?
Talk about that.
So, the plan is for next Tuesday, and we're gonna make the decision Friday, so be, be agile. If we don't get it to a point where we really think we have a substantive conversation, we're gonna push. We don't wanna have meat just to meet, so we're gonna try to get to something we can come forward with, an agenda, here's what we discussed, here's what we think we need to do. Um, so I'm confident we will, but sometimes we don't get, we don't finish where we cut.
Where's our dinner, Glenn?
I, I, before we move on to the, I just was, for this work session, is that, I mean, is that gonna be the primary focus, or are we gonna touch on that? I feel like we haven't, we haven't resolved that mission value statement.
We have, and, and we can go there too.
Well, that's why I think, I think the work session either way probably should happen, whether we cen- center it on this mission statement, or just center it on the other stuff.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, what we bring forward would help shape the mission.
It should, inside out.
Yep. But doesn't have to happen. Might be a little bit of both. So if we have a mission statement, and we aren't, have, we have a key performance area, why not? Well, maybe we need to.
Right. Okay. So plan on, so plan on work session Tuesday, this coming, this next, this next Tuesday, seven?
I'll only have that on the water, man.
Um, that's your thing, ask him Thursday.
And when we get a cancellation, that'll, the letters they send out to the, like, on 22th Street, I don't know.
Letter, oh, um, Stu, did you get any feedback on the letters from the dilapidated properties or the cleaner properties?
Haven't heard anything.
That's the end?
Did you give my email?
I did, I responded to you too, about the third day, you know, this period.
I was just looking for your response, I was wondering where you wanted to go, so I was...
Yeah, I said three days.
Pardon?
I, I said three days, my response to you.
She did email it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I didn't know six days, but...
Yeah, uh, but that was the, the third day, so, especially with the court walks a month, three days kind of is like a fault almost.
My main concern's that very worn house, nobody can be located there.
The one was allegedly in...
The one's been going on forever.
But, who knows, it still is.
I see you get on the phone with me.
Yeah, I thought I'd...
Staff colleagues.
I didn't, it's a...
I understand most of the dirt.
I'm gonna be a jerk.